Okay, you're recording.
I make a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
It's by the team on the meeting board.
Oh, no, there you go. I don't need it. I can see from over here.
There's been some discussion, a little bit of the committee. In particular, you know, Kevin has been looking at solid waste rate. And as Mark and his marksmen involved, and there we have the conversations on different pieces of this. But the solid waste was kind of the first one that we were looking at. And when we talk about rate analysis and doing that, there's a couple of different pieces of it that we like to look at. One of it is, of course, you want your utilities in the black. They're not making any profit or not typically each of which runs about.
Doug, you might need to move that microphone a little closer.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, any better?
Much better, much better.
Okay. So I put down on the agenda here just a couple of points when we talk about rate analysis, in particular, solid waste that we need to look at. On an annual basis, we look at utility rates. Usually it's like, do we have to do an increase mainly to keep up with inflation each year? But there's other things you need to do as well, and one of those is a rebalance, you call it. And I'll say, let's talk about sewer for a minute. Say we have a lot of residential annexations, and that residential side of the city is growing. You can have it where then you get out of balance, your commercial or residential mix changes, the percentages. And you can get in situations where you have residential is paying even commercial share of some of the expenses in that operations. Just because the percentages change as the city grows in different ways. So what you really need to do is, you know, once a year you'll look at rates just to keep up with your budget and keep up with inflation. But every few years you need to come back and do a rebalance. And that's one of the things we see in the, pardon me while I hit on your papers. But in the solid waste fund is you can see where recycle is running at a deficit, which really isn't a surprise. A couple of years ago, we were talking about China not taking plastics anymore. And those things like that. And just the whole industry of recycling has changed. Leo probably remembers, you know, I remember 20 years ago, we used to make money on recycle. And we would save up stuff and sell it in bulk and make money on that. Today, it's the complete reverse. Now it's like, who can we find that charges us the least to get rid of it? So it's a completely different thing. So to see recycle tend to run in a deficit, that's not a surprise. One of the things, you know, I came out of a finance background. So I look at numbers and I think, okay, numbers will tell me what I have to do. But in the case of recycle, that's not always the case because you have a social issue that's there as well. So then city council, you're going to get that discussion of, even though financially it costs us something, it's a social thing that we should do. But the thing I always like to do is make sure, okay, if we're going to do that, let's make sure we're watching it. And when we do these rate studies and things, make sure we know exactly what that means when those costs are going up. Because what it does for Leo is as those costs for recycle goes up and he has to pay for those, and we're not keeping up with the rate side of that, then he's starting to have to take money out of different parts of his operations to cover that. And that puts Leo in a really tough spot. He gets in that squeeze like that. So those are the things why it's really important to come back through every few years and do a, we call it a cost of service analysis. I think I wrote that on here. It's called COSA. And that's just going back through. You do a rate study, but it's more in depth because then you look at the different lines of business, like on this chart, and make sure that their rates are supporting that piece of the operations as much as you can. So that's kind of the part, I just wanted to lead off with a little bit about it. We have the information here. This is what Kevin had requested. And he and I have met a few times and gone over this. And Mark and Leo and I have talked over this. One of the things I see is recycle wasn't a surprise. The roll-off part was a bit of a surprise, I think, for all of us, that it's running in the red. And that's the third column of numbers in from the left.
Roll-off being those large ones that fits one on a truck and you deliver them and pick them up.
So there's always a couple of things. When you kind of do the first run at something like this, there'll be maybe three different things that can happen. You can have an economic issue, like recycle, the prices went up, and that'll throw you out of balance. Other things that might do it is structural, and that's where you get part of the city grow more than another part of the city that I mentioned a few minutes ago. And then the second one is internal, and this is, I know what Leo and Debbie are working on right now. You might have it when our bias software was set up in like 2004-ish, something like that. Did it have enough fields to put rates into and things? So that when we try to do a rate analysis, we can actually go in and get enough data to know how things are looking. Right now, our bias software, particularly in solid waste, we have to lump things together because there aren't enough fields to put this kind of roll cart or toter or this kind in there. And at the same time, I know I have found places where that original programming in 2004 might have taken expenses for one kind of roll cart and it puts it in another area. So you have to really go back then and try to split everything out. So you have challenges there, economic challenges, you have growth challenges, and you have challenges there of can you get the data out? And so that's when I spent time going over this. You try to go into thinking of those different things. So I'm not going to go through all, each of the numbers and everything here. If you just look at the bottom line there, you can see where the numbers are red. Those are things we have to look at and then look back at those three items and think, okay, are those impacting our operations somewhere?
Almost seems like we're more concerned about the data input. I just remember looking at the last full council meeting we had. We were, revenues were surpassing projected revenues. And so, I mean, it's, you can read whatever you want. I mean, if one thing is losing a dollar. I had a business in town for about 20 years and commercial always paid way more than residential. Now there's no businesses or commercial compared to what there was. So residential has got to make it up somehow. I mean, it's, the dynamics have changed. I mean, it's the way it is, Doug.
It does. It goes back and forth. I know when, like in O'Carver, when we would work on economic development type things, and especially when we were trying to bring some commercial businesses in, we were trying to look at is what is the cost of doing business for a new company coming in or someone?
A third more than it is for the residents.
So, and so we would look at things like, what do our commercial rates look like? Is it subsidizing residential? Are there different things? Do we have the right categories for industrial to come in? Like sewer, Mark probably deals with this. If you bring in a fish processor or you bring in someone else, their sewer output isn't what comes out of the house. And it can be a lot worse, a lot more concentrated in things you don't want in that one.
But for sewer, if you own a business downtown, you're open for eight hours a day and you've got two employees, how many flushes are you going to get? Nobody's taking baths or showers.
So anyway.
That's the way it is.
Yeah, and kind of just the whole point, there's a lot of things to look at, but the key thing is you have to stay consistent. And each year, talking about increasing rates isn't fun for anybody, you know, especially for city council. You know, and it hits in the fall, Debbie's going to have to do property taxes and probably within the next meeting.
Also for taxpayers.
Yeah, you know, so that's not a fun time to be on council and have to deliver that message and get the message in return. So I think staff and everybody understands that part. But I think it's one of the things, though, because we had that fiduciary responsibility to really watch these things. We have three utility companies that we're running, you know, we had stormwater, solid waste, and sewer. So we have to almost be thinking of them a little bit apart from the rest of the city. And that's why we have to do this analysis like that, because they are businesses that we have to run and they, they can't go away. We have to continue those.
Don't they more or less supposed to pay for themselves?
Yeah. And, and that's why they have it too. The state law, like we can't earn a profit in the sewer fund and put it into police cars or the general fund. These have to stay, as they call them enterprise funds, and they have to stay separate and be run like a business sometimes.
It's like having separate companies within, within the city. You got the sewer company, the solid waste company. So that's an easy way to think of it.
So on the agenda here, we had part A, had the solid waste analysis. I kind of talked about those things, like the rebalancing between the lines of business, the software considerations, and then restructured budget classifications. And kind of what that means is looking at our bias software and is it putting out the information to Debbie that allows us to look at categories the right way? Maybe the way we did categories in 2004 is different than how we need to look at it today. So that's kind of the thing here. And I think there's not a lot we can say right now. We don't want to jump into these numbers and say, oh, let's get rid of recycle, because you have a social question there. And let's just raise the rates on roll carts and, and those things or on roll-offs, I meant to say. Because we're in competition, Leo's got to go out there and say, okay, do I have private companies that offer the same service? And if I raise my rates too much, is everybody going to leave? And then we lose the revenue stream. So there's a lot of little squeezes in there and things, and that makes it really interesting. Any questions on that? I don't know if you guys had seen any of this or talked with Kevin a little bit about it or. But basically what we do is because a lot of the revenue gets pooled into one account, we have to try to come up with a way to say, okay, how do we split this revenue up between these categories? And about the only methodology I could come up with was tonnage. So we know how many tons of garbage go to residential. We know how many go to commercial. Leo has a great spreadsheet where he tracks every truck and everything it's doing each year and even has it divided up into these categories. And so that was the only way I was able to go in there is using the information he gave me to divide that. It's probably eighty-five, ninety percent scientifically accurate or inaccurate, but at least it lets us highlight where there might be things we have to look at a little bit further.
It gives you something to look at where we didn't have it before.
Yeah. So this is kind of like a cost of service analysis, that COSA I talked about. You may not do this every year. You may say, okay, we're going to go with a cost of living index or if there aren't, isn't something unusual going on. And then maybe that fourth year, you do a more in-depth study like that, just to make sure everything's on track.
If you have the right software, it's, it should be way simpler. You can push a button and get it as opposed to having to go back five years with a pencil like you did. Hopefully in the future, push a button and it'll spit out the information.
And I think now, you know, we may want to use a different format once we get more information. But we have this now, this model, and we could easily now just dump in the information each year and take Leo's tonnage numbers and you could just continue this.
Solid waste is solid waste. You know, you can break it down, you can dice it up. It all comes out in the same department. I think what you have to do is, obviously you need to break it down more, but, you know, if we're running in the black.
That's good.
If we're, like Leo was, I wouldn't say I'm a gusher, if a truck breaks down, boy, there's $10,000 real quick that puts you from black down to pushing even, Steven. But, you know, it's almost, I don't want to micromanage his department. I don't want to micromanage streets, any of those. I, I think Leo's been at it long enough to, well, he's done a pretty darn good job. And, and I think he needs to know these numbers, but I, as a council person, I don't necessarily need to. You know, I need to see what the department is doing.
And there's a, I think ECD has one of these, looks like this. I stole some slides out of a presentation I have. This would be some slides if I were talking to city council, probably be as in-depth as I would go. And you'll notice it is just about policy. It talks about what things you should be looking at. And the key thing is, I know, it drives me crazy. The key thing is city council taking a really high level view of everything. Mark and I were talking about this the other day. There's a presenter I've seen before, and he talks to city councils, well, Mike Bailey, I think he came up and did our council retreat out at the T House out there. And Mike talks to city councils a lot, and he says, well, you guys are eagles. You fly around, you should be way above looking and when you see dinner or something of interest, you drop down, you grab it, and you go back up again. So the thing that staff really uses council to help us set those policies. It could be things like, how much do we keep in reserves or do we do recycle? That's the council discussions. Then you guys say, your staff, run with it. And we go and jump into the weeds and make it happen and do that. And council's not involved in that so much unless there's an issue we need a policy decision on. That's kind of how.
Well, that's what we're here for is policy. You know, we're not here to micromanage each department and tell you how to run your, do your job. Unless you're really different.
But you got to keep an eye on things. When you got three different subjects and this one's way down here, you got to figure out why it's way down there, because it, it might be a mistake or it might be something going really bad. You just, you know, if you clump them all together, saying we're making money, that's not good because if this section here is way down and it's, it's, it might be a simple fix or it might be a hard fix, but you got to know why it's going in the hole.
Well, you know, there's different issues too, Kevin. I, I don't know if you're from Segulwe originally, but when I was a kid, I, I moved away for 15 years, but I'd been here 70 years. Everybody had a compost heap out, heap out next to their garage and everything leached onto the alleys where the garbage trucks went down. And now, you know, since you've got your yard going, people are taking their grass clippings and all that stuff down there. The town looks good. Land values are going up. Taxes are being increased, I'm sure. And, I mean, it's, and we're taking it, it's not leaching into our alleys anymore, you know? I mean, so these things cost a little bit of money, but the city is recouping it, maybe not at your yard, but maybe in taxes and other revenues and people coming in buying real estate and stuff. So, you know, that's for the public good or whatever you consider it in here, what do you call it? You know, it, it, it just helps the town. And helps the citizens and it might cost a little bit of money, so that, that can skew some numbers, Kev, you know.
Oh, yeah.
But I think you get paid for the grass going out, don't you, the meat? But it's not that expensive though.
No, it's still relatively inexpensive all the way.
Well, everything costs, yeah, that's, that's the problem.
I just, that's one of the things on yard waste too, especially around Christmas time when there's trees and things like that. Because if you don't offer those things, it'll be out in the ditch along the road.
It'll be on the river road.
Yeah. So you want to offer those. It just keeps it out of the community and having that eyesore development.
But if it makes the town look better, then it's going to be more appealing to people that want to come in and purchase properties and build houses and stuff. That's my opinion. You know, I'm a simpleton, so.
Mayor Jeff.
You were talking policy. You were saying that actually our job is accounted to what we consider the policy of council members it is. And really what we're hearing is in the, we suffer. And of course, that was a situation that was beyond our control and it's something that everybody's facing, you know, across the nation and then some. So it would be the council's prerogative if they'd like to go and consider some people policies to land in.
Because advocacy really, the recycling is, would it cost us less if they just threw it in the garbage because that's where it's going anyways, or is the recycle actually getting recycled? Like for the feel-good of everyone, like I just need it to be recycled?
Well, no, according to Waste Management, man, I have to move it like them, and I think they have a third party that audits them every so often. So you know they're supposed to be doing the right thing, which is they are recycling and they do have outlets for most of the stuff, for all of the stuff. You know, you do get occasional garbage in there, but they've told us, they've told me several times that our stuff is the best stuff that we've got. Because we're able, you know, because we handle it ourselves, we police it and make it the best products. And so they've always been pretty excited about it. But to, I don't want to answer that question further, is you said if they just threw it away, or if we just threw it away? And I did do the analysis last year and the year before, it was about 35,000 to 40,000 we could save if we did take it to the trash. But it was not what anybody else was doing in Skagit County or anywhere else. Everybody was taking it and just passing it on to the, you know, unfortunately, the ratepayers.
I think some of the recycling is going to be taken away from, correct, that glass is going to be, you're not going to be able to do glass and recycling.
We haven't got that policy yet. There's, there's still accepting glass, but.
I just think the government's board, we've had that discussed.
Yes, yes. So I mean, it likely is going to be, but they want to separate it, still collect it in some way, like what we do out of the site, which is source separated, so. But yes, they would like to get it out of the stream because it contaminates basically the kind of where it makes.
How much would a taxpayer save if you got rid of recycle and we just threw it all away?
That was one of the questions we looked at. So the thing that would happen, I'm just going to give you a for instance. If a person has one 68 gallon can of recycling and you have a, let's just call it just make it even, a 68 gallon garbage. So you'd be paying 68 gallon garbage rate, which is, I would call it $25. And the other, the recycling is, I think we're at $5.50, maybe some odd cents. So you would, essence, or essentially that person would have to pay two 68 gallon garbage rates to cover our garbage rate. Is the way I look at it. So it'd be $25 times two, so that person would unfortunately have to pay a little bit more if we just made it all garbage.
Oh, okay.
You know, if we decided socially that, hey, we're going to take it to the landfill and that's the way it is.
But the other way is $31.
Oh, no, it'd be.
With the recycling.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes. So it's $31 currently.
So it's about a $20 a month savings.
Yes, it could be, yes.
Yeah, you know, per can or that people are doing.
My mind still works on numbers. But recycling's over only every two weeks.
Just in general about recycling is consciously, I'm always trying to save money the best I can for the ratepayers and everyone. And it's, I went through so many scenarios down there, like I draw it out, like, God, let's just have everybody down to my site. We'll just recycle down there and we'll just take out garbage and they won't have to pay recycling. Well, then the, the side note to that is I will have to have staffing down there some way, shape, or form to cover that. It'll be a full-time person maybe too, maybe just a minute, so that creates another animal. And then, I mean, I've done it everywhere, like, let's just do glass and I'll do a couple of different locations. And then there's, I got to manage that in some way, some street forum, so. It just, there hasn't been really the golden, correct.
Well, I think you said it, there, you know, is a, a point, there is social responsibility. You know, I mean, it depends on how much we want to put on our shoulders, but.
Oh, one more thing is just, just to kind of give some perspective on what's happening. So in 2023, we do go out for our solid waste, our garbage. We'll be going out to have the landfill give us a new notice or new, new rates that are coming. Now, it's in the indication what's happening, it's not only a major king calendar or anything, which usually is the case. We could see a substantial increase in rates there. I'm not saying it's happening right now, it's just been a dollar a year. But it just depends how that contract comes back. And I know it's 2023 and that looks out, but I've been already looking out to see what, what could happen to us. And if that goes up, because we're at 101 right now, a ton, recycling is the new rate. Well, they didn't affect the new rate yet, so it's 168.33 a ton. But you can see easily that garbage could catch up to the recyclable if, if the rates, you know, change at the landfill. You know, if they say, hey, it's another $10 a ton or $20 a ton, we could start seeing where it might not be as beneficial to us all the way. But anyway, there's a, there's a prospect of coming that I just, just so you know kind of what could happen. And I, I don't know right at this point, but indications say that it could be going up.
Well, we're looking at, happy looking at all those things for all of us, because.
So Doug, what's our suggestion that you, we're going to give to the city council?
I think the thing we need to do, one is we have to do an annual review and do a rate increase here. You should just do that every year. And then at some point here, you know, this next year or whenever, you know, I'll be back to Leo and Mark here to do, probably do that cost of service analysis and have someone come in and help us with that. I think what we probably have to do is, I know Leo and Debbie are working on a couple of things here. Make sure our data's good, because you can bring someone in, sure data's not ready, it's, it's not worth our time. So we just need to make sure we've got everything ready that we can do. And I think that would be the.
Would, would, I'll ask Debbie, would a cola take care of a weight, a rate increase? I mean, would that keep up? If we just did a straight, you know, it's going to be what, 5% or something this year? And who knows, next year, maybe three this year? I don't know.
Potentially a point in time, you know, we haven't done the whole analysis on the cola, what rate we would be suggesting. They'll be bringing that back, but, I mean, it will help, there's no doubt, obviously, bringing more revenue. But also, all of our expenses are going to go up as well because we're in the midst of negotiating contracts.
But you have taxpayers paying the rates too.
Yeah, so it's, it just really, yes, revenue goes up, but also the taxes continue to go up and so.
And my wages go down.
Yeah, so.
Or you get a new president and the gas prices go up.
Yeah, it's never been, yeah.
Gas prices probably are more fluctuating.
I'm just curious whether a cola would keep us at least, because we're running above.
We're spending more than we're currently bringing. I don't think a cola will solve this issue.
An inflation number, like a CPI number, that probably wouldn't.
No.
And there's too much volatility in those. So really, you have to look at your budget and see what things you have projected to be spending.
So I'll just be another senior that goes for exemptions and then my kids and my grandkids and all you guys can pay more for me. Thank you.
So on this policy, can we set it so you have to go through it to certain, every July or June? So if you don't put the policy in there, you always got a good reason to slough it off till later. So, if you don't put the policy in there, you always got a good reason to slough it off till later?
Well, I think staff would be probably pretty good about bringing it forward. It's good to have it in the policy, just so everybody knows, you know, this is just something we need to do, it's just a good business practice, to do that, um, because if the staff missed it and didn't bring it, uh, those bottom lines are gonna start turning red, and then we're gonna have another conversation we have to have.
Council would know right away.
Yeah. When Debbie does her financial report, she talks about those utilities, and you see those graphs, like that, you'll see that red line go above.
Are you getting new software to, that this will work with, or are you just adjusting what you have, or?
Well, I think we're, we're learning the software better, that, that might be the case, but we are, we're looking at software, but software investment is pretty expensive as well, so, um, just wanna be careful, you know, it's that fine line.
Spend it down there, or spend it here, yeah.
Exactly, where do you spend that money, and so, yeah, so, but I, uh, as Doug shared, he's now created a really great model for us, and with all Leo's data, we can continue to analyze it just as, you know, better, I, I'm understanding than what we've been able to in the past.
You're aware of it now, too.
And Leo and I are can already start, now we're like, know what our issues are, we're gonna start talking about, so what, maybe, you know, maybe we, what, what's going on here? So, we'll be able to have those discussions. The data's the data. The totals are all correct, whether they're in the right bucket or not is a whole other situation, but, but we've seen this trend where the solid waste is not keeping up, the revenues are not keeping up with the total expenses. And then one thing that's always important, as, as Doug has alluded to, is your reserves, and, and your planning for future, garbage trucks are expensive, but they have to be replaced, and they have to be maintained, and all those things, so, we need to spend some time looking at that, those types of items too, to make sure we're keeping money set aside in those reserves for our, like our house, our solid waste house needs to have a savings account.
But you don't want all the households and Cedar Willy dumping their garbage along the roads.
No, solid waste is very important.
No, and the reserve, it's a whole nother conversation, reserves, and we could, we could have, spend an hour just talking about that. But, uh, things even like part of your reserves, you have enough cash to make sure things are, are working fine. You may have a little bit of extra cash you keep, it's a rate shock absorber a little bit. So in any one year, if you have something like, suddenly, um, Leo has to spend a whole bunch of money, 'cause we had really bad storms, and there's a whole bunch of yard debris, um, we can absorb that a little bit, it might cost us a little bit more, but we don't have to be going back to the ratepayers and say, well, we go up two percent this year, and now we have to go back half a percent, and there we go. You have that little extra cushion here, so it's that, uh.
I, I just don't wanna do a knee jerk to, oh, we gotta take it at five percent, you know.
That's, that's what we wanna avoid, to be honest, doing that.
And, and I understand that, and, you know, we can all absorb a couple percent or whatever, you know, and then have a cost of living, or whatever, throw that, or, you know, whatever, inflationary deal, but, uh, you know, I, I like the people of this community, and there's, I'm not the only person that's retired.
I am. He's gonna be months from.
But I don't wanna pass it on to my kids and grandkids either, so, that's, or all, you know, I don't wanna take it off myself and pass it on to that, 'cause they're gonna get it one way or another, you know, it doesn't matter, so. I don't know, I'm, I'm just, I hate taxing people, I understand it has to be done.
So what does the city council do from, from today?
I think, um, Mark, you know, we were talking a little bit about maybe our next work session, have a little bit follow-on conversation with council.
Well, you, you've been, you know, you talked to me about three, four months ago, and this is, it's, uh, a bee in your barn, I, I, you know, I, and I could never quite figure out what your big concern was.
The red numbers.
But a lot of blue numbers.
Yeah, well, it's just one of those, it's a good question, the recycle one was really, I think, where it started, and that started a couple of years ago, when the whole China situation changed, yeah.
Metal went from, what, two hundred dollars to thirty-eight dollars, or twenty dollars, and aluminum's down to.
We almost, it broke even, it was.
Aluminum's down to eighteen cents, and sixty cents, and, yeah, I mean.
It's not government that's out, but I mean, it's, it's one of those where, you know, you can't count on.
Yeah, you're not gonna get rich on that, yeah.
Yeah, what we thought we would do is, uh, bring to council at the next work session, November third, a presentation. I've got Katie Isaacson, who's done our sewer outlook updates for the last umpteen years, updating that. Uh, we did it earlier this year, as we were finishing the sewer comprehensive plan, and it's been my intention to bring, you know, and I did present to you the sewer comprehensive plan, I showed you the financial plan and all the rest of that, and that's built, uh, with a two-point-three percent, uh, factor in there for increases on an annual basis to make the model work. And so, uh, the thing that, obvious thing that comes to mind right now is, and it's kind of on the same order as what we're talking about on these, this year inflation right now is tracking just under six percent, you know. Do we need to react in the middle of our plan to try to take it, take that into account? Well, you know, Debbie's gonna have a lot to say about that, and Doug, uh, but I think we're doing this over a ten-year plan, and when you look at that, it was point eight percent last year, and we use two-point-three, uh, this year it's five point, whatever it is. You average them up, you know, it's getting close to being that same number, so we're better not to overreact and try to do this mid-force correction, unless we have to, unless there's something, some systemic thing that's now hit us, and, and I don't see that yet. We're all optimistic that this is eventually gonna, you know, level out, right now COVID has, has kind of, uh, bollocked up everything, so to speak. But, anyway, so, uh, we can come to you on, on November the third, and present where we're looking at on the sewer again, and, and I, Katie and I talked about it just before the meeting tonight, and, um, in reality, we don't see recommending anything different than that same, staying the course, making that, that increase. Last year, uh, we, uh, did the same thing for the other utilities as well, uh, you wanted a second presentation, which I put together, comparing us with our, our neighboring agencies, and we were, you know, in the upper third of that, but still reasonable on that. And so, and one thing that I will always remind you of when we do these is, uh, in all of those snapshots, everybody else is doing the same thing, they're all increasing. Most of the agencies around us have baked in, uh, over a two or three-year period, whatever period they choose, and then crease, crease every year at this rate, and then they reset it, this is what Doug's talking about, in terms of you go back and reset every now and again. We really haven't taken that approach, uh, and I've had to come to you annually and say, this is what we need to do. It's maybe something we should look at in the future, I don't know.
I would be very supportive of that, that's the, the way that I'm used to managing it as well, is that, um, we come up with a policy, we do the work, and then it goes for a little bit, and then, obviously, we're not ma- meaning, we're fine, but typically, that'll be good, and then you do another in-depth, and then stuff.
Yeah.
Three to five, you know, three years is usually, three quarters, especially with the way we do our budgeting, or by any budget, it's really good to get on a schedule so that we're timing that with our budget, which would be perfect if we start, we do this next year, because that's for our twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget that you'll be working on next year, so the timing, I mean, potentially, maybe we'll be suggesting a, just a COLA to get us by for twenty-twenty-two, and then we'll do an in-depth.
Prior planning prevents peepore performance.
Let's hope, let's hope so, so that is, I think Mark and I and Leo can all.
That was an old pinkyism, but he, he didn't use a peepore.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
So if that sounds reasonable to you, we'll, we'll come to the council work session, and, and, and I'm anticipating that I'll recommend we just stay the course on sewer, and I think the others should, should mirror that too, yeah.
That's, that's weird. Always in that direction.
Anyway, uh, let's put Leo on the hot seat, since you're running, uh, what are your, uh, any input from you?
Oh, my goodness, um, well, one of the inputs I would have is, um, we did talk a couple times about, uh, the extra recycling cans that are out there. Uh, there is many people out there, I would estimate between five hundred and seven hundred people out there that have multiple sixty-eight gallon can carts. And what we're seeing in the other cities and other counties is that they are charging for those additional cans. So if you have one, it falls under your rate of five dollars and ninety-two cents, but if you wanted additional can, that would be an additional five dollars and ninety-two cents, for instance. I think that would help, but it's pretty good with our red at this time, um, I don't think that's gonna hurt it, maybe, because that's people paying their, their share of the wood they're using on the, on the products, so, um, that's.
It sounds like thirty thousand a year.
I think that's about what it was.
I think that's what it was, and.
We, we came up with a number.
User fees.
Yeah, and that's, I think that is fair, 'cause I see it's, it's happening everywhere else, it's a trend that's happening, and, um, anyway, I, I would just suggest that we look at that if we were to go ahead.
Are you able to track how many people have two then?
It's pretty, pretty good, pretty good.
It's very absorbent, I mean, obviously, they, they're good, they know what.
That's what's good about having a hometown crowd, you know, just, we, I mean, the guys are like, we're just gonna out there, and, 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 and do that, so if this person's doing that, and we can send a little notes and keep track, and, so.
And also another thing that Leo and I have been discussing, and Mark, is the staffing, making sure as we grow, obviously, we just need to be careful and conscientious that we can service the staff at the staff levels, and, so we've been thinking about that as well, so.
Yeah, I probably should speak to that a little bit, Leo and I did have a conversation about this. So, you've been hearing from us, and from John mainly, that, you know, we're growing at a good clip right now, and it depends on what metric you use, but we've, we've had, um, we've had, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty, uh, sewer general facilities charges this year, which, you know, part of those are apartments, part of those are single-family, and a little bit of commercial. If I count it in terms of number of park impact fees that have come in, which are all fifteen hundred dollars regardless of the class, it's a hundred and eighty-eight of those right now, so, you know, and I've been, uh, my sewer plan that you'll see on the third, we've used a hundred for four years, and then fifty for the final six of our ten-year plan. And even though we're up this year, uh, we were lower last year, and it, it still tends to average out, so I think the plan is still valid. But it does produce the, it does give us the reserve funds build up faster, which is a good thing right now. And, and again, on the wastewater plant, everything's looking towards to that big plant upgrade that's coming within ten years or so. Well, okay, so we, we'll come to you on the third, and we'll bring that information to you, and, and I'm wondering, Doug, Doug, do you feel that that's a policy decision on the cans, if we start billing for the extra cans rather than?
Yeah.
So, it, we could, we could recommend that at the, uh, at the, that meeting, and then we could implement that, and that would have an immediate impact, I'll confirm the number, but I believe it was about thirty thousand is what that would be, that would help the.
I would love to see that.
And, and, you know, you, our, yeah, that would, that would close to solve, uh, the deficit in that particular column. And again, as Doug's been saying, I don't know if we wanna focus on the individual columns that much, it's more on the bottom line, and then occasionally, every three years a row, so we should look at resetting the thing, and making sure that all the classes are correctly, that's kinda what you're saying.
Yeah.
If the same thing's broken year after year, you can fix it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we got our.
Yeah, it totally does, thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, boss.